Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, November 12th. It's 6:30 in the evening. And daylight saving time is gone and it's dark. And the rain began just a little while ago. And winter has begun. Let the record show that councilors are all here and healthy. Glad to see everybody here today. Before we get to the minutes, I need to announce a change in the agenda. The appeal hearing on the Brandy Meadows subdivision has been rescheduled till Tuesday, December 10th, 2019, at 6:30 here in the council chambers, City Hall. So, that's a big portion of your packet this evening, folks. We have minutes from October 29th. And do they meet with your official... Oop, kido.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Under minutes. I wrote down the wrong thing in the motion. They approved to be minutes for October 29th, not September 10th.
Thank you. Thank you. Will... Does that make your approval?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. I have for public comment today, Josh Brandt.
Yes.
Good evening, and welcome to City Council.
Good evening. Glad to be here.
Glad you're here this evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to come and address the council. I have my days mixed up, you know, like usual. I'm terrible about keeping my time and days in line. But, you know, we addressed a surcharge this year for recycling. And so, you know, we wanted to address that basically twice a year. And so, we're coming up on December. And so, I figured I'd get in and try to at least get that conversation started. Like I said, I wasn't able to get on the agenda, but we can do that for next time.
Please keep your... Just keep rolling. You're doing fine.
Yeah. So, basically, we implemented the surcharge a year ago. We've had that in place currently, right now. It's working really well for us. It allows us to help kind of fix the costs that... Balance out the costs associated with recycling. Unfortunately, that market is not getting any better. It is actually getting worse by the month now. It flatlined a little bit, maybe six, seven months ago, and it has now gotten worse. They're starting to raise the costs again. However, I don't think it should affect the surcharge, other than my suggestion would be to continue to work at that $1.90 surcharge that we currently have in place right now. We're not coming in for any rates this year. So, again, it's just kind of to get that conversation rolling. I can address concerns or questions. I can talk about it in depth. I can talk about recycling. I just don't know what's on the agenda. And I know I'm on a time limit with the...
We're going to give you a little bit of time here if we have questions. I know that some people may have questions.
Just a quick one.
Yeah.
Only because it came up in the Facebook chat group recently.
Yes.
Your paperwork, the diagram that you have that describes what you take, what you don't take, is very clear. But I think there's still some confusion in the community as to whether or not you take shredded paper.
Correct. So, I could see where that confusion would happen. What happens with shredded paper is it is a recyclable material. The problem is how to get that to the facility. Right now, we do it with a co-mingle. By the time someone shreds paper, if it's not in a bag, everything at the processing plant runs up conveyor belts based on weight. Of course, if it's already shredded, it ends up on the cement floor, gets swept, taken to garbage. So, the problem is, is there's not a program in place to be able to do so. If I had something in place, for instance, a drop off for a plastic bag filled with shredded paper, that's a possibility if we want to go there. However, then transferring that all the way to Garden Services in Salem wouldn't be able to be done by a garbage truck. It would have to be done with a flatbed or maybe a service to come in and do that is an option. So, even though it is recyclable, it can't go in co-mingling, and we have no way to transport it currently. So, the best way to do that is to take it to Garden Services yourself, and they will do it for you.
Okay. Because Garden Services has same graphic on their website that you have.
Yes. Yeah. So, we tried to go a little more in depth than they did. They're pretty general. Being the processor, they can work black, white, yes, no, a little bit easier than I can. Trying to facilitate the needs of the community is a little bit different. I do have that handout with me if anybody needs that before we leave. I know that the other one that people bring up a lot is egg cartons and pizza boxes. The thing with that is, again, the recycling market was so bad a year ago that they had to figure out the best way to make the quickest change. And part of that had to be taking materials that are recyclable but aren't properly disposed of out of the equation. And the reason for that with pizza boxes is cheese in the box from the top, which, a side note, a lot of places have a perforated edge that you can rip that off. Top can be thrown away. Bottom can typically be taken. However, again, with that, Garden Services, I cannot tell you whether that does get recycled or not, because they don't currently take pizza boxes, even if it's clean. I don't think. I don't know for sure. But typically, what happens when you look at that, it's not something they take, it gets tossed to the side. And so, and the reason for that is, most of the time, even at my recycling center, I would say 80% of the pizza boxes still have two or three pizzas in them. So, that's one of the big problems with egg cartons.
Not at our house.
You know, we do do a pretty good job. It just happens more often than you'd think. And then, in regards to the egg cartons, most of the time, people will crack that, and instead of putting that in the garbage, they put it back in the egg carton. And then, without thinking, you just throw that in the co-mingle, and you forget that now that yolk's gotten on that material. It's no longer recyclable at that point. So, that contamination factor plays a big part in that. The others is, which makes it more difficult for us to explain, which we apologize for quite often, but this is the same answer we get. We're able to take ones and twos, but only certain ones and twos. So, you can read into that as best you can. It makes it hard. There's a lot of things that are labeled one and two that just still are not recyclable. Basically, that's why they've limited it down to jugs and bottles only. In my graphic, I can bring it out, it's detergent, same thing. That's kind of like a jug. The problem is, most of the time, that's not washed out. It's contaminated. And the main thing is, the best product right now is paper. Mixed paper is not, but the good viable paper is really good. What happens when there's any liquids in that is it completely destroys the paper. So, the one thing that actually can make some money, we're no longer able to make money off of it. And that kind of goes back to the original conversation of the co-mingle. That's what makes it kind of hard, because that liquid can really be difficult on everything. The other one is batteries. I know that that might have been a concern for people. I just recently started to not take it, and there's kind of a backstory to that. In conversation, trying to have... It's a problem. I'm sure the council knows that hazardous pickup is now switching from twice a year to only once a year by the county. And so, because of that, obviously, it's one less chance we have a chance to get rid of batteries. So, in that conversation with the county, I was talking to them, and they had brought up that actually batteries could be... Fall under hazardous material. At that point, I'm not qualified to handle hazardous material, so I had to put a stop on it. I haven't gotten clarification yet. I've reached out to DEQ, and I've reached out to other haulers. The problem is Salem, Marion County, they have a program in place for batteries. Polk County has nothing in place. So, because of that, what they've told me is I actually fall under what they call the generator. And even though I pick it up as household material, when I store it, now I'm actually the owner and the generator of this material. When it gets to a certain quantity, being able to transport it like I would have to do, it then could become hazardous. We're waiting to figure it out, but that's the reason behind it. I know there was some panic. Most customers have understood the best way to get rid of it is to take it to Salem to a hazardous waste facility. They should not be thrown away. The internet will tell you it's okay to throw AA, AAA batteries away. The problem is, they can start fires, and it has happened at several transfer stations. So, there's still a chance that we're going to keep that. That's a program that has been in place. I'm not sure. We have to relook at the... Our review, or what am I thinking of here? The ordinance to see what the requirement is. But like I said, DEQ, that's actually something they prefer not to handle or deal with at all. So, to kind of get back, I just... Yeah, I was here to just kind of have a quick little conversation, addressing the other questions that people might have in regards to recycling, at least get us prepped for moving forward.
Additional questions from council, please?
I think this would be a great opportunity for Brands and both of the cities, especially the City of Independence, since we're here in the council meeting, to co-promote some of the recycling opportunities. I'm thinking like cleanup day. Or if we have one of our banks or other vendors in town that's bringing in a shredding truck, let's get on top of that and let everybody know when those opportunities are happening.
Correct. That's one of our goals for this year. I know in the past, you know, one of my requirements is kind of the educational side. We have implemented the website. That's been up and running this year. And typically, we've come down here for the Fourth of July. We found a little bit of a better way, maybe, to reach out to more people is to use the cleanup day. We see anywhere between 120, we've had as high as 230, 240, if my numbers are right, Chief. But it's a... I think we reach a good amount of people that way.
Good.
And so, we want to try to utilize that this year, whether it's getting out more flyers, whether it's discussing the issues more often, promoting it before, ahead of time, especially with the shredded paper. I think that will be helpful to the community, and that's our goal for this coming year.
And as a council or as a city, we should be making it a priority to cross-inform each other, so that Monmouth and Independence know the same things that are going on.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, of course, it would be... It's helpful that way. Like I said, I know people get frustrated with the recycling requirements, and, you know, it seems like it can be up and down. They're trying to not be that way. The problem is, the market's that way. And what happens is, a processor is going to tell me one thing, and then we're trying to work as a city. And for me, you know, two cities work together to try to figure out what's best for the community. And that's what's number one to me, regardless of... I'll do whatever the cities want me to do. I'm more than happy to help facilitate that. If we want to double down and go all in on recycling, we can do even more recycling if we want to. It's just the problem with a lot of that, unfortunately, is there's costs associated with it. And so, it's trying to minimize but maximize what we're getting out of our services, out of our community, and the best way we can do it.
I'm going to ask one question. I think I know the answer, but I need to ask specifically. There are all sorts of rumors that what goes in recycling just goes into the garbage.
Yeah.
I'm going to guess that that's not true, but I wanted to ask you so that we have it on the record.
That is not true.
Thank you.
However, there is a large number of stuff that unfortunately does. Right now, I know Garden Services in Salem is spending $35,000 a month to transfer contaminated material and garbage out of their facility. Thirty-five thousand. You know, I have a few numbers from them. For instance, 10 years ago, you could make money on paper, cardboard. Right now, one of the big issues is cardboard has zero money for it. So, for the last five months, I've made zero dollars off of cardboard. And that is hauling roughly 300,000 pounds of cardboard, and I make zero dollars for it, which used to be something that would actually help offset some of the costs. Right now, if we didn't have the surcharge, Brands would be negative $129,000 just in recycling from year to date.
Additional questions from council at this point? I really appreciate you taking the time to come in and visit with us. This is helpful, and I think it answers some questions. And who knows, maybe there's some joint things that we can do. Maybe there's a joint video that we can do together to... So, people can say, this goes in? Because sometimes, folks don't always read.
Yeah.
But that might be something... I'm looking at Jason, old buddy, old colleague friend.
We do have a great resource in our communities.
Yeah.
He lives in Monmouth. He happens to live in Monmouth. But Clay Warner is one of the main guys for Garden Services. He is unbelievably nice to me. He helps me out with so many different things. He answers the phone when he knows that I'm going to rag him on costs, and my community wants this, and we need to get this. But like I said, he's super helpful. We are more than happy to help out any way you guys need to, whether that's, you know, setting up more meetings, whether that's being more involved with City Council on a regular basis. I am more than happy to do that for you guys.
Appreciate that.
So, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Like I said, we can... I know that Tom and I have a meeting next week that we'll address a few things, and hopefully, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh, can I get the... I think I have the old flyer on my refrigerator.
Yeah, of course.
As long as you're here with them.
Just go ahead and give them to Karen, and she'll help get... Make sure that all of us get them.
Yes, all of us, send all of them.
There you go. Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there other people who are wishing to speak under visitor comment today? Okay, moving forward, I just have a brief report. Had the opportunity to take one of the senior staff from the LOC last week around our community. They're going to bring an LOC board meeting and retreat here to Independence. And they're going to be using the Event Center, and the folks from out of town are going to be staying here in town. And they're already looking at the exciting, different opportunities for eating, socializing at all the new places. We walked through where Gilgamesh is going to be, and very impressed with that. Even tried some of the goodies, tastes at Melting Pot. Chocolate with jalapeno. I'd never had that before. That was a very interesting...
Good stuff.
That's an interesting flavor. So, anyway, Mr. City Manager, I think you get to be the next person. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Marion Council. So, I do have a number of items. I just kind of want to go over more for information tonight. First being, in your packet on page 185, and yes, there are more than 185 pages in the packet, is a handout from the League of Oregon Cities for some municipal fundamentals training. They have these periodically, and I notice all the dates are in December, so may or may not work with you. But if that is something that you would like to participate, just let Karen know. The training's pretty reasonably priced and is available for you. Kind of wanted to give you just a really brief and kind of not very complete thoughts, but one of the things that legislature passed in the last session was requirement that building permits could be issued before completion of subdivisions. Currently, we usually require the subdivision to be completed before they pull building permits, and as well as a lot of jurisdictions do that, but not all. And the state basically said that once certain items were released, reached substantial completion, and those are typically the water lines and curbs, but not necessarily the full street, just enough for the street for fire access, that we would need to start issuing building permits. And that brings up a couple of concerns about what is our process for determining what substantial completion is? How do we make sure that we have adequate performance bonds in place for the remainder of the work to be completed? And then, what is our ability to release occupancy permits related to items that may not be completed on the public improvements? And so, we'll probably be doing something quick before the end of the year to kind of bring some legislation back to council. It'll probably be in the municipal code, but we're currently working on trying to get some pieces in place to make sure that the city and the developer can have certainty so that there aren't confusion as to how those things get implemented over time. Lot 7 out in Osprey Landing, which is actually the formal name of the subdivision, but I think we all call it Independence Landing, is something we've talked about, and council directed us to go out and put a RFP for that property. We have received one response back so far. We didn't officially close that, because we wanted to be able to take additional applications as they make... Or proposals as they may have come in. But we're going to be starting to form a selection team to take a look at that proposal and see whether or not that would be one that meets the criteria and something that can move forward to working out a developer agreement for that. So, I just want to let you know that we have closed, or at least the initial phase of that, and are looking forward to if we get other proposals, but we're definitely going to be starting to look at that in the near future. And hopefully, be bringing something back to you before too long. Wanted to let you know about a workshop that's happening all day on Thursday of this week. It's our economic development, and other partners are working with regional and state tourism partners on a Polk County food trail. This is an effort to better promote on-farm experiences, like the roe hop yard, where you pick blueberries, as well as local farm-to-table restaurants and products. So, this is another tourism effort that all of Polk County has really kind of gotten behind. The state's also participating in this in order to try to promote even more tourism activities in Independence. So, update on the 2040 Vision Town Hall. I know a number of people participated in that, but we're still looking for more input based on the same things that people saw at that town hall, which is really kind of starting to narrow things down and to prioritize certain areas. And so, we're going to take that onto the road to a few groups. We're going to be reaching out to an eighth grade class at Talmage. We're going to be taking into some of the... Ramones can be taking into some of the different Latino-speaking and Hispanic-speaking population. And we're also going to work on converting that onto an online poll to get some better participation. We want that effort to be fairly robust. We had a lot of input into what's happening, and we want to make sure that the decisions making forward actually have good participation. So, there'll be a number of different things that we do in order to make sure that that gets moved around and we get the input that we're looking for. There is also a winter event being organized for downtown for December 7th. There's a lot of flyers out for there. We put it up on our social media. It's a family-friendly event with activities and photo ops in and around many downtown businesses, and it's really intended to tie together the Santa Train and the Parade of Lights. And so, this is something a little bit new, but something that we're trying to bring a little bit more festive events to that time of year. The Event Center Request for Proposal is out. It's due back on November 22nd. We're going to have something in the IO tomorrow, and so, we're looking forward to getting some feedback on and some proposals back on potentially running the Event Center downstairs and taking some of the burden off the city staff for that. Donatello's Pizza is to be open soon.
Coming summer 2019.
I know. I had a specific date here, and I changed it to hope it's be open soon. But I think they're getting very close. We're hearing that they're pretty much ready to open, and another exciting business coming into downtown. So, I want to make sure we recognize them. A couple of things. I got this from Polk County today. They're conducting a survey on childcare needs, and they want people who reside or work in the greater Polk County area to take a moment to fill out a short survey relating to people's thoughts about childcare. It can be a parent or employer, or someone who's just interested in the topic. And all the answers will remain anonymous. So, we will go ahead and actually post this on our social media so that people can actually have a link to go to. I went to the county's webpage. It wasn't obvious where it was. So, I think it would be best for us to push this out through our social media and then put the actual link so people can go and participate, take the survey. But I wanted to let you guys know that they're doing that, and I think that's going to be some good information for us to all consider. So, I wanted to just give you a heads up that we are sending out a Measure 56 notice for a code reorganization. And I'm just telling you this because it's going out to 2,000 residents. So, once people see the Measure 26 notice, you may get some questions, and so, I wanted to make sure you guys were informed. And just kind of real quick, Measure 56 notice was something that was passed by the Oregon Legislature in 1998, and it requires that notices are mailed to landowners when a change in land use laws might limit property uses. Says local governments may mail the notice to every landowner whose property could be affected as a result of the change. So, I'm going to read through the changes that are kind of proposed. And really, these changes are mostly just a housekeeping step. We're trying to work to consolidate the code, and we have many sections that have things that can be put into charts and tables and made more easy. But just... I'm going to read this so you can hear it, and if other people are interested, they can hear it. The proposed changes would require additions to existing structures to meet the residential design standards. Currently, additions do not have to meet the standard, so those are additions to a house. Currently, they are not required to meet the residential design standards. Require the garages of new duplexes to be set back at least four feet behind the front facade of the unit. Currently, all single-family homes are required to set their garage four back behind the... Four feet behind the front facade. But the Independence Development Code has two conflicting provisions about setback requirements for duplexes. So, that's... I'm trying to clean that up, make sure it's clear as to which provision provides. Requires new buildings on a corner lot where they have an access to alleys to have the garage accessed from the side or rear of the home. Currently, that is not a requirement that exists. And require new duplexes or multifamily structures set on a corner lot on either... To either orient one of the units or the parking to the side street. And currently, there is no such requirements. Again, the bulk of the changes that are going to come through are really just reorganizing stuff, but these are the ones that definitely could affect someone's property or what they're going on. And so, the notice that goes out details all of that on the back. It talks about what the requirements are. But since we're sending it out to so many people, residents, we wanted to make sure that you guys knew that that was going out in case you had questions. And of course, Freda Vander, our senior planner, put this together and is available to take their questions or your questions if you should have them, so. And then, finally, two things. I just want to let everybody know I'm going to be out Thursday and Friday, going to Tennessee to look at some colleges with my daughter and my wife. So, I'll be out for a couple of days, but back next week. And then, just had a question for you about whether or not you wanted to have a meeting on December 24th.
Anybody have a burning desire to wait for Santa on Christmas Eve in a council meeting?
No.
No!
Not in particular.
I think we're all in agreement here. Any objections?
No.
Okay, we'll go wait for Santa at home.
Yeah. So, I figured that was the answer, but I wanted to double check and make sure...
Thank you for asking it in advance.
Yeah, and we definitely have the ability to flex around that date. So, there's nothing that's pressing that we would need to be doing, so we haven't really put anything on the forecast agenda for that. And with that, I will entertain your questions or comments, or if you have...
I have a few. I'm kind of intrigued about Josh's comment about we can do more on recycling. So, when you meet with Josh, I'd like to hear maybe what some of those might be.
Yeah.
I realize it would come with a cost. I understand that. But I'd like to know what your capacity could possibly be.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, that's exactly one of the reasons we're trying to meet. And I like Counselor Morton's, or Counsel President Morton's, comments regarding, you know, working with Monmouth as well, because it would be nice to see kind of some same standards applied to both cities that makes sense. And so, I think ultimately, you know, the recycling market is stressing every city that's involved, because the costs have just changed, the level of service that can be provided. And so, I think those are one of the things that not only us, but a lot of other cities are needing to deal with. And if we can deal together with that collectively, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Do you have a date yet for the volunteer dessert? I only ask because, you know, I'm planning the volunteer recruitment fair, and it kind of hinges on... I want to announce the fair at the dessert.
We do, but I don't have it with me.
Okay.
So, let me get that back.
Okay. And then, the last one. Can we get a copy of that Measure 56 notice that's going out to...
It's...
Is it... Oh, that's what that is? Okay.
Yes. The official front page is all the legalese and the actual actions are in the back.
Okay. I don't see Measure 56 on here anywhere, but okay. I'll take your word.
Yeah, it's... We don't... Yeah, we typically don't write that.
Okay.
It's just what we commonly refer to as Measure 56 notice.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Additional questions?
What date are you planning on these going out?
I think they're planning on going out tomorrow. I think we, folding and sorting and stamping and all sorts of things today.
All that fun stuff.
Yeah. It was a fun day.
No, it wasn't.
Look on your face does it all.
No, I, it wasn't me, but.
So I have one quick question on Lot seven. Do we have any firm dates as far as the absolute cutoff date for acceptance of RFPs? And when will we make this happen?
No, we specifically didn't put that in there because we had an initial date, so we wanted to take the initial batch so that we could start processing them. But, you know, we will keep it open until we actually get a good proposal, even if that takes two years, so.
Counselor Morton?
Yes. The twenty, Vision 2040 that's going to Talmage Middle School, do you have a date for that yet?
No, I don't. Sean, I think probably has one, but I don't know if he, well, actually, it looks like he was there a couple weeks ago, so.
Pardon me?
As I'm reading my notes, it looks like he's already been there, so.
So it's already happened?
Yes.
Okay. Otherwise, I would have liked to have been a, at least a witness to that. And I'm not sure if this is the right time to put this out there, but since I have your attention at the moment, I would like to suggest that we look at March thirty-first, which is the next reasonable fifth Tuesday, and look at having a joint council meeting with Monmouth and Independence. Something that I would like the, everyone who's party to that to consider.
So I'm certainly open to that. That's something for council to consider. I will say that we have been looking for some items that, that would be important to both cities before we would wanna meet. I think, I met with their city manager once, and we already found a few items that seem to make sense for both cities to consider, so.
And at least, at least something about recycling could be important, too. There might be more information by then.
Okay. Gentlemen, anything?
I just have a follow-up.
Please do.
On the 2040, are we gonna be, is that gonna be on the agenda when we go to the high school?
Would we have our meeting in the high school? Of course, it will, we'll have an agenda forecast, but we usually only look out a couple months. I think that's further out than that, so we typically do that in April, I believe, so.
She's asking if 2040 will be on the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, 2040?
The 2040, yeah.
Will be on the agenda when we have?
When we meet with the kids, when the kids are there. When we're sitting in the room and all the kids are talking about how they can't wait to leave Independence, are we gonna talk about what the future of Independence is so they wanna stay here?
Well, certainly, 2040 will be done by that point.
Okay.
So we will have the document, and I think, you know, we'll be building the agenda. But certainly, yeah, the more response that we can get of kids wanting to stay here, I think better we are, so.
And then I just would like to echo Counselor Morton. I think the end of March is great, and I think if Mr. Brant's willing to come, Independence and Monmouth could be leading solutions in this if we worked hard enough for recycling.
Okay. See what we can do. Anything else? Okay, let's have a finance report. Good evening.
I, I'll have my report in your packet, and I don't really have a whole lot to add to that. I would really like to hear your questions, comments. We've had this format for a while. I know that I've always asked for if you've got anything you want to see additionally or want more information on. I would really like to know what it is that you wanted to know about and hear about, if there's something that's, that's, you feel is missing from this report, that you'd like more information about, that I could expand on this report for the future.
Council members, you have the, her report in the packet. Do you have questions that you'd like to direct at the Finance Director at this point?
I do.
Please do.
This is, this is a challenging area for me, just so you know that. The only, the only comment I have on the report, and I don't really want to frame the whole Minnet discussion about debt, because I think Minnet does an awful lot of good for the cities, and sometimes we overemphasize the debt situation, and we get away from the fact that we have this amazing internet connectivity. Right. But you do have a statement in there that says that they project a much lower debt payment than usual for the second half of the year, and the total for the year to be close to the budgeted amount. Do you honestly expect it to be close to the budgeted amount? That is what we're hearing from Minnet? Okay. Yes. And I would, again, not to frame the discussion all, only around debt, I would really like to see Minnet come to council and talk to us about the new capabilities, you know, with the upgrades and everything that are going on, and I think maybe that way we can get away from framing it as a debt conversation every time we bring it up. Yes, it has been a while. It's probably been a year and a half since Minnet has come to a meeting, and I think that that's really a good-
City manager's writing that down, so I think that will be on a future agenda.
I'd like to have more ammunition to go out into the community and talk Minnet up. I've, I've been a Minnet customer for five years now, and it's probably the best ISP I've ever had. And I think if it's gone down four times in five years, that's probably maybe an exaggeration. So it's a good, really good capability that we have. Right, yeah, it's a good service, and, yeah.
Additional questions?
I was just curious, why was the general fund revenue beginning balance so much different than what was budgeted? I mean, in a good way.
Right.
But I was just curious, why? Was there a specific reason for that, or a series of reasons?
It's a good question. I haven't really done a full analysis on that. I generally like, prefer to wait until we have the actual audited figures for the fund balance to, to, you know, make sure that I'm not too far off before, before I really give it a good analysis. I would say that probably a good percentage of that, certainly not six-hundred thousand of it, is so much activity in our, in our building department.
Okay.
Of course, that's, that, you know, doesn't come near totaling that, but-
Well, if you, just wanted maybe to check it out and get back to us?
Yes.
Yeah, so, Counselor, I'll just add to that. I believe that three-hundred thousand of that is actually payments to the old city hall that we did not make last year because the developer did not perform their, their portion. So we didn't actually budget, but that was actually budgeted last fiscal year. Those payments never went out, so that would have increased the ending fund balance over what we projected because we had anticipated that we weren't spending that money.
Okay, yeah, that does make sense.
That explains. Great.
Thank you, Tom, because, yeah, I'd forgotten about that part. We didn't spend three-hundred thousand dollars.
Additional, additional questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving forward, we have on page twenty-three, Council Bill formalizing the action, the decisions that we made last time. And, does anybody carry in this one?
I can do it.
Yeah, thank you.
Didn't know if you wanted to just make a decision on it, or what? You'll remember, hi there, Fred E. Evander, city planner here.
There you go.
You'll remember, we had a public hearing on the annexation at the last meeting. Your motion at that meeting was to draft up an ordinance for you to consider, to formally adopt that annexation. I think that's about it. Are there any questions?
Okay, we did have extensive discussion last time, and so this is the enabling ordinance. And so, if someone would like to begin the, the process that we have to go through?
Sure.
Please do.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2019-04 in full, as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries.
And ordinance declaring territory annex to the city of Independence and amending the comprehensive plan, land use map, and zoning map for tax lot twelve-hundred, map eight S four W two-nine, and stating effective date.
Okay, somebody like to do the second one?
Sure.
Please.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill number 2019-04 for the second time, by title only.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries.
And ordinance declaring territory annex to the city of Independence and amending the comprehensive plan, land use map, and zoning map for tax lot twelve-hundred, map eight S four W two-nine, and stating effective date.
Final motion?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2019-04.
A motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries.
The justice branch will be assigned for this number one five seven two.
And as we move forward, reminding everybody that we did change the agenda and the appeal here on the Brando, Brandy Meadows subdivision, it's been rescheduled to Tuesday, December tenth, 2019, at six-thirty here. Moving forward from there, we, gotta get my piece of paper here. Sergeant Hedlund, I think it's to you. It's always good when there's a big smile when you're coming up. I always like, always like that.
Always happy to be here. Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. You should have a memorandum for me for a change of ownership for a liquor license application for 7-Eleven. This is really seem, when it came in initially, it seemed kind of odd, but I think it's just a logistical thing, that the corporation isn't necessarily going to be the owner of the liquor license, but the actual licensee, because it's a franchise, I believe. So the B.R. Food Mart made application for this license, and that is owned by Mr. Burke. And I conducted a background investigation on Mr. Burke and didn't find anything in his background that I believe would inhibit him from operating that location.
Questions? This is for 7-Eleven. Does it make, is it okay for everybody? Okay. If there are no questions, this is an action item, please.
I move to recommend approval of the above liquor license request upon payment of all fees.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Discussion. Think we're all okay here? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You, too.
Council announcements, please.
I have nothing.
My goodness.
What?
Shock and awe. Any other announcements? If not, if someone would send us to dinner?
Let's go to dinner.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.